The August 9th, 2021 Regular Wasilla City Council Meeting is called to order. The time is 6:00 PM. Before we begin, council, please put away cell phones. If you've got personal business to attend to during the meeting, please move for a recess. Also, when speaking, please remember to state your name for those streaming the meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Rousa?
Here.
Councilmember Bernie?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Veelock?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Brown is absent and excused unless there is objection from the body. You do have a quorum. Councilmembers Rousa and Veelock are with us in council chambers. Councilmembers Bernie, Johnson, and Harvey are participating telephonically.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Councilman Rousa, will you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The first item of business is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes? Hearing none, the agenda will stand as presented. There are no special orders of the day or commission and agency reports this evening. So, we will move to public hearings. Madam Clerk, please read the title to the first ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's Ordinance Serial Number 2114, Amending the Fiscal Year 2022 Budget by Appropriating $27,000 Within the Capital Improvement Fund and Transferring $27,000 From the General Fund for a Salary Survey Study.
Thank you. The public hearing on Ordinance Serial Number 2114 is open. Anyone who would like to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to adopt Ordinance Serial Number 21-14?
It's been moved by Councilmember Johnson and seconded by Councilmember Bernie to adopt Ordinance Serial Number 2114. Is there discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Councilman Rousa, one question about this. Quite some time ago, I had asked about patrol officer wages for Wasilla Police Department, and I was met with a response that consisted of a document that you can find readily available on the website, on the city website, and was also told that those wages were controlled or managed by a union, and that it was, I don't know, it's like some secretive or something. I guess council members can't even know, because I asked and no one ever responded. And I asked many times, and I never got any good data. I never received any actual data. So, I'm not here to express my disappointment again on that, but I would like to ask if this process encompasses our patrol officer's wages, or if that's handled separately under this more like, kind of privately managed union process. And, you know, I'm an outsider, right? I don't understand how this stuff works, so forgive me my layman's perspective. Thank you.
Mr. Tankersley.
Through the mayor to Councilman Rousa. So, we did respond to your request in the sense that the pay grades for the police officers were provided. Using those pay grades, using 20, 80 hours, it's pretty simple to calculate base wage. If there was more, which I understand recently, a couple weeks ago, a request was made. I've been out of office for a couple weeks, have not been able to respond. I will be looking at that further. As far as the second question, there's no, like, private thing here. Union negotiations go on with all the unions, wages are set through the negotiating process. Unions have their way, if you will, of negotiating wages. They're gonna definitely let the city know if the wages aren't in line, or things like that. That being said, however, for the last couple of years, and speaking to this a little bit, in the last few years, there's been questions as far as the salaries. And that's not just, it's focused a lot more on the nonrepresented as opposed to the represented. But in this particular case, it's citywide. If we're gonna do this, it's citywide. And it doesn't make sense to just parse out part of the city and just look at part of it. So, to the third question, this is on all of them. I think it would behoove the city to know where we stand, whether you're a union member or not.
Thank you. So, just to be clear, this will provide some assessment to even patrol officer wages for Wasilla Police Department?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
To Mr. Tankersley. So, this, and actually, actually not really to Troy, but I know we had a citizen last meeting question, this, adding that to the budget, why we're paying $27,000, to find something maybe we could find online, or maybe that's something the AML does, or... But I just wanna put that, if it's anything like my job I had for many, many, many years, we conducted salary surveys, and it wasn't something that you could just pick off the Internet, or even AML, because every organization, and I would think even every city, has special positions, like, you may be doing something totally different than Palmer, per se, your position. You might be in control of IT+, you're doing some finance, or, you know, you might be doing some public relations, but you're also in charge of the Menard Center. And so, it's really hard just to blanketly say, this person should make this, this should make that, because these positions are all different. We really need to have it professionally looked at, and make sure these people are being compensated. Maybe we're paying them way on the high scale. Maybe theirs should be frozen, their salary. Or maybe they're way on the lower scale, and they should be getting a raise. So, I personally think this is very important, and it is a wise use of $27,000.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there further discussion? Troy?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Veelock, and thank you for bringing that up, because you bring up a very valid point with municipalities. Municipalities that partake with AML also partake in a salary survey with AML, and we report those wages based on positions. And, but when we do that, it would be like a finance clerk to say is this range, this is low end, this is a high end. It's not about the person.
Right.
Right? It's about the position, and what that range is in police officers, and IT, et cetera, et cetera. And that's all great when we're looking at generalization of positions, and to include union positions. But what it doesn't do is exactly what Councilmember Veelock just led to, was what's unique about the position, what's unique about the city of Wasilla and its economics, what's the difference between Anchorage and Wasilla? You know, it's not a 300-member police force, for example. So, does the chief of a 300-member police force different than, you know, a 20-member police force, for example? There's a lot of economics in there that play a factor in there, and the AML salary survey doesn't provide that.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote on the adoption of Ordinance Serial Number 21-14.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Rousa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernie?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Veelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
The motion to adopt Ordinance Serial Number 2114 passes with Councilmembers Rousa, Bernie, Johnson, Veelock, and Harvey in support. Councilmember Brown is absent.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the next ordinance.
Ordinance Serial Number 2115, Amending the Fiscal Year 2022 Budget by Appropriating $70,200 From the General Fund Assigned Fund Balance Land Bank for the Purchase of Lot 10, Block 2 of the Wasilla Town Site.
The public hearing on Ordinance Serial Number 2115 is open. Anyone who would like to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to adopt Ordinance Serial Number 2115?
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt Ordinance Serial Number 2115.
Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, this is Councilman Johnson. I second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Veelock and seconded by Councilmember Johnson to adopt Ordinance Serial Number 2115. Is there discussion?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Bernie?
Mr. Bernie?
Madam Mayor, if you could, just for some background, explain the benefits of our need for a land bank, and, you know, holding on to the property as a city.
Mr. Giddings.
So, the function of the land bank is to make purchases such as this, when properties do come up. So, every year, the city puts away funding in the land bank, so it can be made available in case parcels come up for sale. So, this parcel is adjacent to two other parcels the city owns, and the property owner came to us about a month ago, wanted to know if the city was interested in buying it. The mayor indicated that we were, and this is in front of you tonight, but I missed the second part of your question.
Just the importance of it to the city, and, you know, what we're looking forward to in the future, if anything.
Is that the land bank or the parcel?
The land bank.
Through the mayor, Councilmember Bernie. So, the land bank is actually established through goals and initiatives of the council. It's real similar to, you know, the capital funds that we have for vehicles and computers and that kind of thing. This, the assignment to the land bank is for money there for what Mr. Giddings just referenced, in the case of a parcel coming available that the city wishes to acquire for whatever purpose that might be. If the, if the land bank wasn't established, then in essence, you're drawing from fund balance, and depending on the activity of that year, you may or may not be able to be able to do that.
And the reason why I bring it up is because, and this has been kind of a topic ever since I've been on city council, and it's how much is the city competing against private companies? And are we sensitive to that, or are we just trying to increase our investment portfolio within the city limits? Are we sensitive to, you know, is there an opportunity for commercial company to go in some of these properties that we're acquiring?
Mr. Bernie, this is Mayor, and I can tell you that this parcel was listed, and there was one bid, and it was so low that the people that owned it laughed at him. But, we are trying to establish downtown parking, and so, with this connecting to the parcels that we already have, it will enhance what parking we've already got.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Is there further discussion?
Madam Mayor, this is Councilman Johnson. I first want to say that I'm not opposed to this, although I do have just one question. In the value of the property, if we could have expected, say, this to have been properly developed?
He's breaking up real bad. I don't know if you guys are getting that or not.
I just got bits and pieces. Mr. Johnson, can you please restate?
Yes. How is this? This better?
So far.
Okay, very good. My question is, I'm not opposed to this, so don't take my question wrong. The, it is, if we are going to be buying the property, we are going to be taking this property out of the pool for commercial development. Do we have some idea, or is there any kind of a loss of, say, sales tax revenue that we could have reasonably expected this property to have generated for the city?
Mr. Giddings.
Yes, ma'am. So, this is one of our townsite lots, and they're all very small. So, there's a lot of people that have looked at this lot over the years, and tried to figure out how to get a building on it with parking, and no one's been able to make it pencil. You know, the idea to develop downtown really means you need to combine as many lots as you can, whenever you can, and then you get a parcel that's big enough to do something with. And so, that's kind of what we're proposing here, is it's gonna be combined with two other lots we have, and the property owner had the same vision that the mayor wants. It was the intent of the seller to have a Welcome to Wasilla sort of feature, which is in keeping with how we would develop it and tie it into our parking. So, that's kind of the plan and the objective here.
Thank you very much.
Is there further discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Rousa?
Yeah, so, Mr. Giddings, what other lot is, this is Lot 10. Is Lot 9 the one that the city owns?
We own the two lots on the corner that are due west. So, it ends up being an L-shaped kind of parcel, or development. So, the right out, the right out the window here, the two parcels we own.
Okay, and there's a, they're not actually adjoining?
Like, they do.
There's a...
Oh, the alleyway.
There's an alley?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, yeah, a lot of question marks, for sure. One of them, I guess, is like, one of my questions I had about this lot before other council members chimed in was, I guess, you know, the mayor, somebody kind of hit on it, it's barely buildable, I think you just did. People, it doesn't pencil, right? And so, I just wonder, even as a parking facility, how functional it will be for $70,000. The mayor did mention that there was an offer on it from the private sector that was incredibly low, laughably low. And what that points out to me is that maybe we're paying too much, and we're actually sort of relieving the current property owner of their burden. So, I don't know, that's just another perspective on the same, on the same argument. The lot's so useless that even the private sector won't pay more than some laughably low number, right? But here we are, we're paying more than the assessed value, so...
Archie?
Just to add one piece, as far as how it would be developed, so the piece on, say, the half that joins Main Street would be more of a welcome feature, a park sitting area, it'd be some kind of amenity to Main Street, and then the other half of that would be parking tied to our other parking.
If I may, just real quickly, I can visualize this as being used really well by the city, and the parking lot where the old fire station was, had Big Dipper's over there developing right now, that looks amazing. And if we can kind of keep that process moving, you know, and we can populate small, almost useless lots like this, with nice city features like what's being developed right now, I think it's a very good use of money. But it has to, the vision has to be followed through on, you know, we can't just leave it as it is. It's a pretty, pretty horrible-looking lot. Thank you.
I think you will see a lot of different looks when the couplet comes through, when we have sidewalks, and we have nice trees, and lights, and whatever on that. It'll look a lot different than what you see now. So, okay. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Mayor, just real quick, Councilmember Bernie here. I would just caution future councils, since I've been on city council, there's been many, many, many acres acquired by the city. And, you know, at a certain point, the city can't be landowners. The city has to, you know, allow these, you know, the majority, if not all, that remains to be commercial, residential, retail. You know, the land bank is a, is a great idea, but how much are we actually taking away from, from development? And I just, I'm not saying that this particular lot is the case, I'm just saying, over the years, the city has acquired many acres. So, again, I just caution future city councils, just to keep a close eye on, on the city, the property that the city's acquiring. Thank you.
Okay. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote on the adoption of Ordinance Serial Number 2115.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Bernie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Veelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Rousa?
Yes.
The motion to adopt Ordinance Serial Number 2115 passes with Councilmembers Rousa, Bernie, Johnson, Veelock, and Harvey in support. Councilmember Brown is absent.
We are on to persons to be heard, and no one...
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. This is Councilmember Bernie. I am gonna, I hate to do it, but I'm gonna have to jump off. I really apologize.
Okay, thank you for being on as long as you have, Mr. Bernie.
Okay. Thanks. Have a good night, everybody.
Six twenty-two.
Ten.
Half left.
There's still four. Okay. There is no one signed up for public hearing, or persons to be heard, so, anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the council? Hearing none. We will close and go to Madam Clerk. Please read the consent agenda.
Madam Clerk, through the mayor, I'd like to, I apologize for not mentioning this earlier, but I'd like to pull AM number 2135 from the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, is that... Hearing no objection, that's polled, and I will read the consent agenda then into the record. We have the regular meeting minutes of July 6, 2021. We have no introductions or resolutions up for approval. Left on the consent agenda, we have two AMS. The first is AM number 2134, authorizing the Alaska Railroad to conduct signal crossing inspections and maintenance services for the fiscal year 2022, in the amount of $62,250 for city road crossings of the railroad pursuant to the 2002 Crossing Permit Number 7588. And lastly, AM number 2136, contract award to K&amp;H Civil Constructors, in the amount of $49,900 for the Maureen McCombs Trail Project.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Harvey, I move to read the consent agenda as read into the record.
Is there a second?
I second that.
It's been moved by Councilmember Harvey and seconded by Councilmember Veelock to approve the consent agenda as read. Is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Madam Mayor, if I may. Madam Mayor, if I may. Councilmember Brown just joined the meeting at 6:25 PM, and the record will reflect that was, he was here for the vote on the consent agenda.
There is no unfinished business this evening. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the next item of business.
Under new business, first item is Item 10.1, Update from Administration on Emergency Response Efforts Related to COVID-19.
There has been no new action taken on response to COVID-19. Madam Clerk, would you please read AM 2135?
Thank you. That's authorizing the purchase of 210 tons of road salt from Bering Marine Corporation in the amount of $40,950 for road sanding operations.
Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor? Councilman Rousa, I move to approve AM number 2135.
Is there a second?
Second by Councilman Johnson.
It has been moved by Councilman Rousa and seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Is there further discussion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There wasn't a lot of information for this action memorandum, and this might seem kind of silly to some, but I happen to know, just from certain experience, life experiences and projects and things, that there's all sorts of ways to thaw ice on our roads, and the one that is most commonly chosen is the very worst. We have active salmon streams right here in our city. We have a lake right next to the highway, and these are all salmon spawning grounds, and the salt is very bad for, for that, and it's also very, very corrosive to vehicles. And I also happen to know that there are alternatives, and although they're a bit more expensive, that $40,000 bill could turn into 60, or even $80,000. It would be much better for vehicles, and for our environment, and for our salmon, et cetera. So, I think it's just a matter of how much it means to the people of the city, how much those things mean to the people of the city making these decisions. As long as it's my decision, I would want to know more about the salt, and I would choose something better than what's most commonly used, because it is so bad. It really is a very bad product that's most commonly used. So, again, I don't know what this is, because there isn't much information in here. The term "road salt" could mean 15 different things. So, I'd like to start there and see where, where the discussion leads. Thanks.
Mr. Giddings.
So, in Alaska, whether it's DOT or S, we don't rely on salt to melt roads, like they do outside. We scrape, and scrape, and scrape, and we also sand. So, this salt, we mix with our sand, so our sand doesn't freeze in a big clump. So, it's a 5% salt mixture that we mix with our sand, so our sand's stockpiled outside, and if we put no salt in it, it would turn into a solid, frozen ball of sand, and it wouldn't come out of a sander. So, that's the purpose of the salt, it's a 5% mixed with sand.
Thank you. And is, oh, and you say salt, is it calcium chloride, or, okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Councilman Brown, Archie, can I assume that you, or DOT, or someone, have done some kind of research on the amount of mixture, so you're not contaminating the salmon streams and causing other problems?
The city hasn't done any kind of analysis like that. We use the same percentage DOT does. They're putting it up and, I mean, they have a bigger risk, they're putting it up and down the Parks Highway. So, we're putting ours on side streets.
Councilman Rousa, I would like to express that my concern actually comes from what DOT uses. I know one of the suppliers that actually gets the material for DOT and fulfills contracts for DOT, and they have... Um, and, and it might sound, it might be surprising, it might, I was surprised, um, but it is kind of shocking, actually, what, uh, what we choose to do sometimes as people for financial reasons. Um, but just because it's a DOT, it's good enough for DOT, uh, you know, it, uh, doesn't always mean that, for me personally, it's, I see it as good enough. Um, anyway, uh, I'll, I'll concede there and, and we'll move on. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Giddings?
I could, I could add, uh, so Lake LaCile has been studied quite a bit, um, by the DEC and the water quality folks, and so that's our weakest link. Uh, there's no, it's groundwater-fed, there's no stream flowing in and out of it like Wasilla Lake, so it is really sensitive, um, to highway runoff. Um, and so going back to the eighties, uh, it's been an impaired water body for dissolved oxygen. Well, that's expected because it's groundwater-fed, it doesn't get a lot of turnover, so it's been on a, the DEC watch list for years for dissolved oxygen. Well, most recently, they've, uh, uh, I mean, they look at it every year, they, they actually have went into the lake sediment with some federal money to study the two DOT outfalls. Um, well, I think they've studied the whole lake, but they found two small plumes, uh, so we see heavy metals and hydrocarbons, so that's what's affecting the lake. Uh, they haven't found any impacts to salt. Um, and we've got, and we got the grant last year to do a little lake management plan to address heavy metals and the hydrocarbons. So the, uh, there's one at, uh, the Best Western, that's got a smaller footprint, uh, the one right across from City Hall has a little bigger footprint of contaminant into the, into the lake bed sediment.
Okay, is there further discussion?
Uh, Councilman Brown, uh, Archie, have you, uh, anybody looked at the cost of salt versus other methods of, uh, approaching this?
Not for mixing with sand, no, but I mean, there's liquid product out there that we've looked at before, if you actually want to de-ice a road, uh, but that's not what we use the salt for.
So I can assume right now, from your work, salt is the best thing to keep the sand from clumping together?
Yes.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote on the adoption of AM 21-35.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Rousa, how do you vote?
Uh, yes, and I appreciate the discussion. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Vlach?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
The motion to approve AM number 21-35 passes with councilmembers Rousa, Johnson, Brown, Vlach, and Harvey in support. Councilmember Bernie is absent.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the item under Communications.
Just have one item this evening, Madam Mayor, that's the Parks and Rec Commission meeting minutes from July 14th, 2021.
Okay. Audience comments. Is there anyone present who would like to address the city council at this time? Okay, seeing none. Uh, next on the agenda is mayor clerk and council comments. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, as stated in your clerk report, administration is looking for volunteers to, uh, staff the city's booth at the Alaska State Fair, so apparently there's opening Sunday, August 29th, there's an 11:00 AM to a noon shift, or a 4:30 to 6:30 PM, and then Friday, September 3rd, 4:00 to 6:00 PM, or 7:00 to 9:00 PM. If you're available, if you would, just let me know, and I will coordinate with the deputy administrator, um, and she'll get you. I believe there's free entrance and then parking passes, so we'll need to know by August 18th if that's anything you're interested in doing. And other than that, we'll see you here next regular meeting, August 23rd. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
Uh, yes, Jimmy. Could you repeat the date on that again? I, I missed that too quickly for me, I'm sorry.
Sunday, August?
The.
Thank you, sir. Sunday, August 29th, 11:00 AM to noon. That same day, Sunday, August 29th, there's a 4:30 to 6:30 shift, or Friday, September 3rd, a 4:00 to 6:00 PM, or a 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, just to continue, there was, uh, one other comment, I, I don't know if it's the audience, uh, tonight, although I did hear Archie. Um, last week, there was a concerned citizen that talked about, uh, some vandalism to, I think it was Putter Park, and from what I understand, although I am remote, that has not been, uh, remedied yet, and I understand that, uh, people may have been absent, like my staff from the last meeting, so I'm not sure if there's any follow-through on that. I didn't get to bring that to the, uh, mayor's attention, that's all. I don't know if you knew that or not. But, uh, no, thank you very much, I appreciate it, nothing further.
Mr. Johnson, uh, that vandalism was taken care of, um, within a matter of hours after it was found over in the park.
Very good, thank you. Uh, that's what, that was reported to me, but that's good to hear. I mean, I'm up there by myself, so, thank you.
Uh-huh. Councilmember Vlach?
I just wanted to say I did, uh, attend the AML conference in Fairbanks this, last, this week. Um, it was very informative, it was, weather was great for most of it. Um, real, I really enjoyed and learned a lot meeting other, uh, local government people and, um, yeah, it was definitely worth our while. And, yeah, Simon and Crystal and Glenda were also there with us, so, you know, it was great.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Harvey?
No comments, excuse me. Thank you.
Councilmember Rousa?
No comments, thank you.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and, uh, same thing here, I attended the council, uh, meetings in Fairbanks last week. Very educational, very informative of what's happened around the state, and listening to other councils and our mayors as to what they are dealing with, um, I think we can give ourselves a hand. We're a lot further ahead, uh, in cooperation and where we lead in the city compared to some other places. And just the education I learned, how other parts are working, and the first day, the Defense Forum was very educational, what's happened in the state of Alaska. And myself, been trying to figure out how to bring that up in a council meeting, so was glad to see it there because there are things happening in the state and with the military and the way it's growing that can have an impact on the Valley and Wasilla with, uh, increase in, uh, residents, and it's a goal and opportunity for us, if we're not already doing it, to look at, um, increasing our capacity for additional people to come in, because in the next three years, there will be an increase throughout Alaska in military personnel.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Um, I also attended AML this past week, and, uh, when, we would be having a lot of discussions, uh, I would look at Crystal and I'd say, "But we don't have those problems." And a lot of them, I was glad that we didn't have those problems. I'm very proud of the fact that, uh, Wasilla has been an excellent steward of the people's money. Um, we are growing, and with it comes growing pains, and it's not always pleasant to address them, but we have to, and we will continue to do that. So if we can continue to grow responsibly, uh, Wasilla will be all right. So, that's it. Thank you so much for your attendance, and with that, we are done at 6:39.